Okay, guys, it is seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting for March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. I'm gonna turn things over to Commissioner Breen to lead us in the invocation.
Right. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We're excited to have the Girl Scouts here. We're excited for our upcoming events, our trash pickup, our Easter egg hunt, and our spring fling. We ask that you be with us and keep our citizens safe during this time. And we also ask that you be with us tonight as we do the town's business. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, as Commissioner Breen alluded to, we do have some special guests in attendance with us tonight. We've got the Youngsville Girl Scout Troop forty-eighty, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. Color, advance. The colors. The colors. Everyone, honor your colors. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which means one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all. Color, dismiss. Everyone, dismiss.
All right. So next up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Say it.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Item four is project presentation. Officer Gabriel Fenera on recruitment.
Commissioner, this is Gabriel Fenera. Recently sworn in with the Youngsville Police Department. I'm the latter officer, came from the county. began my career in two thousand and eighteen in law enforcement. Prior to that, I was a fire, worked fire EMS for about six years. I love what I do, and I love being able to recruit others into this profession. I remember as a seventeen-year-old boy in high school, we had a San Jose police officer, I'm from California, came to our school, and he was dressed in his dress blues, he was looking sharp, and he had a recruitment pitch, and he was talking about how noble this profession was, how honorable it was, and what a heroic thing that one could do is to serve his community with pride and to be able to be a public servant. And I remember, I remember that like it was yesterday, and that's what got me into this profession, was to be able to serve my community, to help others. And right now, across this nation, agencies are struggling to recruit brand-new officers. There's more officers leading this profession than there are coming in. The goal behind this recruitment pitch was, we wanted to get the word out to brand-new officers and to see more senior officers. I like to do graphic design, I also do some videography on the side. So I came up with some posters that kind of just gave a little insight to what the Youngsville Police Department's all about. We wanted to be able to put out our benefits and the pay and different things that excite young officers and more senior officers coming into the town of Youngsville. I have about a two-minute video, and there's also some different recruitment posters. But the goal is to be able to send this out to the community and across the state, to be able to go into our local community colleges and to our basic law enforcement academies, and to be able to spread the information about Youngsville and about brand-new officers coming into the profession, and being able to answer questions and guide them through the process of becoming a new officer. So we have a video and a presentation we'll show. As the town grows and as the need for law enforcement freezes, we want to be able to have young officers consider Youngsville to be their first agency, where they can grow, where they can establish their career. So we want to be able to put out that information to all the community colleges, and even to be able to gain senior officers from other agencies, as we like to call it when we coach people. But we want to be able to have those that more experience base come in to build up a stronger agency for the community. Does anybody have any questions about recruitment and what the goal is?
Is there anything that we can be doing as a board to assist you guys anymore?
Um, that I don't know right now, but I think in the future, for the future, we're gonna be able to put out more videos, be able to give insight to the officers, the agency, and community engagement, and to be able to broadcast that. So everybody that looks at Youngsville has a really good understanding about what we do and what we mean to our community. Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. All right, next up, I've got a little proclamation here for our guest tonight. And it's a Girl Scout Week proclamation, and it states, whereas March twelfth marks the one hundred eleventh anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, founded by Juliette Daisy Gordon Lowe in nineteen twelve in Savannah, Georgia, and whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, character, and patriotism. And whereas through Girl scouting, girls gain knowledge and develop skills that will sustain them a lifetime, making themselves, their community, and the world a better place to be. And whereas, Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the countless opportunities available to them today in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, fine and performing arts, and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas, girls join scouting from all walks of life and are connected across various geographic locations. By focusing on community, Girl Scouts is an instrument of change promoting optimism and producing positive outcomes for all. More than two point five million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating one hundred and eleven years of this American tradition with nearly sixty million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. To be a resolved, I, Fonzie Allen Flowers, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Youngsville, North Carolina, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the life and leadership development of girls and proudly proclaim the week of March twelfth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Girl Scout Week. In witness hereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of North Carolina to be affixed this ninth day of March, two thousand and twenty-three. So if y'all want to come up, you can have this handy-dandy copy of this.
Thank you.
Can we get a few minutes?
You want me on the side, in the back?
We like you right center. Right center.
That's the picture of that.
Okay. Okay. How about you all, did you get it? For yours? Okay. Thank you. I'm excited about this.
Thank you guys so much, appreciate you stopping by. See you.
I hope we don't offend you.
Just don't knock the TVs off. That's all I asked, don't.
Sorry. Thank you all, it's the council.
Perfectly okay.
Thank you.
We were happy that y'all brought them in, because I think we were gonna have to shuffle some stuff around to get some in. It happens. Thanks again. Okay, so next up, we've got a section on public hearings. We've got one item for the public hearing section tonight, and that is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, new section sixteen dot three, Conservation Subdivision Development. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of seven thirteen, and turn things over to Ms. Klinger for a staff report.
So last summer, we brought text amendments before the planning board that would add a density bonus option to the Youngsville Development Ordinance. While you guys later approved those amendments, the planning board had opted to recommend denial of them in favor of this conservation subdivision option. So we went through several rounds of discussion with the planning board, where they kind of went back and forth and tweaked some things, and these are the amendments that the planning board settled on. We would allow developers the ability to develop lots at a density higher than the underlying zoning if they dedicate a certain percentage of the lot area to open space. They detail the intent behind conservation subdivisions, the requirements for the middle of a site plan for a conservation subdivision, details for the required open space and how it should be figured, how the density is to be determined, and information about minimum lot size and maximum lot coverage. That supports the proposed amendments. They provide an option for land in the rural and suburban portions of town that provides flexibility to build on smaller lots while also increasing open space. And the amendments are also consistent with the goals of the support of the plan.
Okay, and thank you for that, Ms. Klinger. So I'll go ahead and open things up to comments from the public. I just want to remind everyone, you got a three-minute timeframe to speak and address the council. We ask that you provide your name, your address, which I think a lot of that is already in here. So I guess we'll call up, if I'm seeing this correctly, we've got Carl that wants to speak on six eight.
In section sixteen, these are just comments and suggestions on this. Sixteen point three dash three, the A, land within the subdivision, still not contained in lot streets, primary subject fields. I think you should add stormwater basins. That was, I don't know why it was omitted, but it really needs to be in there, because those are a significant portion of space in any subdivision. I do think the twenty-five percent and the one-fifth of twenty-five percent, which is just effectively five percent, should actually be carved out separately. Twenty-five percent for open space, and then five percent in addition, usable or recreational open space. They should not be co-joined because they can cause a conflict. So you want to separate those out, so that would add up to thirty percent total. That change will alleviate so many problems. I know that in D one, those are required already. So I don't think that the state-mandated wetland areas should be included in that percentage because they have to be included anyway, and it shouldn't be part of that twenty-five percent. I also noticed in sixteen, sixteen point three dash three, there was no mention of forest canopy. And like the picture that you had on there illustrating, forest canopy is a really integral component of open space and habitat. In regards to sixteen point three dash five, A, remember the calculations, the body of open space shouldn't have a floor of five thousand. It should just be any bodies of water that are perennial in nature, not seasonal or ephemeral. But if it's a permanent year-round body of water, it should be included in the contiguous area. In regards to the sixteen point three dash six, the fifty percent, if you look at the image that was on there, those were about one-fourth size, or twenty-five percent. I think you should provide some wiggle room to the developers, so that if they want to go smaller and then give up more open space, they should be allowed to do that. I think by having them set to fifty percent, they don't have enough wiggle room, and you want to actually have them be creative based on the topography and terrain. In regards to the impervious surface issue, I understand about the fifty, and that's a good number, on the sixteen point three dash seven, but you want to have them be able to modify that percentage by encouraging forest surfaces such as porous concrete or porous asphalt, because that way it eliminates the amount of runoff and helps to recharge the groundwater. So allowing them that opportunity is, I think, a benefit, because you want to provide flexibility. It's more enticing to developers when there's flexibility. In regards to the CRNRs at the end in sixteen point three dash ten, that are crafted in a way to allow residents to be able to enhance amenities that may not have been proposed or remain unfunded. So you want to make sure that those CRNRs and restrictive covenants allow the residents, at least in the recreational open space, to add additional funding opportunities such as maybe a tot lot that didn't get built or a volleyball court or something else, and the restrictive covenants should not prevent that from happening. So make sure that they're written in ways that allows that accommodation. Those are my only comments, thank you.
Comments, thank you.
They're really strategy scribbles. I can summarize them, and you know you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Went really fast. I know.
All right, so we've definitely got a list here. I think a lot of these are designed for the public comment sections, but I'll still ask if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment in regards to sixteen dot three.
Good evening, David Jarrow, six seventeen Young Forest Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Columbus Club, which is all about kids. And so anytime you have a natural area that we can preserve and do something with to teach the kids to get back out into nature, I would like for y'all to consider that, because once they're gone, they're not coming back like they are. So I'm here on behalf of really the future of Youngsville, and if you have a natural area that we can convince somebody to preserve, I think we should do everything we can to make that happen. And with the little remaining time I have left, I did want to remind Mayor, there is only one Carolina, that's East Carolina.
David, I've never had to throw anybody out of my meeting before. Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Matter of fact, the real Carolina is playing right now, so I don't have it up on the TV. We gotta fix that in the future, but any other additional comments on the public hearing for sixteen dot three? Okay. Hearing none, I'll open it up to citizens' comments. And again, we do have a list here. I'll just start, Rod actually signed up ahead of time, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll call Rod first, and then we'll go through the rest of the list. So Mr. Bowen?
While he comes up, I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Bowen. If, I think formally, we should close the public hearing for sixteen.
I skipped right through that, I'm sorry. Thank you for that heads up. Not hearing any more public comments, I will close the hearing as of seven twenty. Thank you for keeping me straight on that, sorry about that. Mr. Bowen, sorry, sir.
Oh, you're fine. Y'all know me. First and foremost, as a veteran, I'm glad you can come to the place now to have prayer and pledge allegiance. That's a good thing, that's forgotten a lot of times nowadays, to say that. I'll make a comment, I guess, about this food truck rodeo that's coming on the park for cinnamon and part southeast of the street. You know, all my issues before in the past with my property, that property's been a lightning rod for one issue after another. And with, speaking for the half of it through residents or for residents that's on that street, I'd like to see if it's possible that that can continue to happen, but maybe just change that venue up a little bit as far as the location. The reason I'm saying that, you know, since there's been more influx of cars parked on that street, I went from picking up trash to having cars run over my ditch into my yard, almost got in an actual fight because either I can't get out of the driveway or someone's thinking I'm being too slow backing my boat in, or whatever the case may be. There's been a couple of times where actually, there was an issue where people have opened up the car doors, guys, and using the bathroom right in front of my house. And it's on my security camera. And, you know, with that, you know, it's just not good. I don't think anybody, you know, would really care for that. Being that it's on a Sunday, you know, a lot of folks, especially me, you know, that's our day to wind down and get ready for the upcoming week. And, you know, being that I have animals, I'm gonna have, you know, probably bored my dogs, but they're not being a nuisance to me or themselves, or even, it just makes for a whole amicable more event. If we could maybe look at addressing this movement that, you know, I think there's a lot, well, there's other places in town, and I think that would be more conducive to that, to provide for a good traffic flow. I think, Kat, you jogged by my house the other day with my painting contractor about there. I mean, you saw how much of that road that takes up, you know? So now I have to deal with that on the other side, and it just makes for a total, just a total cluster right there. But that's pretty much about it. I just, you know, said, I'm not trying to be that guy, but all the frustrations I've had and I've popped in the past, with one, the water, just everything, that property, whether I own it or some, it seems like it's always a lightning rod. And I'm not gonna lie, you know, there have been times I've thought about throwing in the towel and just selling it. But, you know, first and foremost, and you know the hard work that I've done on the cat, you see the house where I bought it, it's something that I'm proud of, where I have a good home for myself and my family, and that means a lot to me.
Absolutely.
Having a food truck rodeo is not necessarily right next to my house is something that I really would, you know, it'd make me happy and my neighbors if that one segment was just somewhere else, and just totally unrelated. So I know in the past, you know, issues I've had, but just one thing I've heard with that property. And I know I've came across a problem, it's pretty braced at the times, and I want to apologize if I did. Because, you know, there's nothing I wouldn't do, you know, for any of y'all, you know, whatever. You know, I'd give somebody a shirt up my back, but, you know, it's just, the frustration level is just unreal sometimes. So I'm just asking to keep that in consideration for my quality of life going on a Sunday with all that.
Yes, sir.
Thank God.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right, so next up for citizens' comments, we've got Carl again.
Lady by Fleming Road, biologist. I am opposed to the rezoning of the sixty-six acre parcel to Corporate Plaza One or CP one. Fact, the property in question is surrounded by residential and agrarian parcels. The Franklin Business Park to the west is not functionally connected to the parcel, and therefore should have absolutely no relevance or bearing to the zoning of this sixty-six acres. The rail corridor provides a significant and permanent barricade that would prohibit any financially feasible or functional connectivity. Fact, the existing open parcel that separates the land from Northbrook has not agreed to any road corridor easement through their property. Therefore, truck traffic would have to utilize Fleming Road exclusively for the foreseeable future. Fact, Fleming Road is a single-lane winding country road with minimal road surface buffers outside the white lines. The town should be petitioning to eliminate all non-truck, local truck traffic, not look for ways to increase it. This development will exponentially increase the number of big rigs on Fleming Road, not only compromising the structural integrity of the roads, which would not design to accept heavy truck weights, but endangering the lives of residents who frequently drive on Fleming. The shoulder has a range of between two to twelve inches, which is insufficient width to accommodate residential vehicles when uncoming trucks deviate out of their lanes crossing over the double yellow lines. Fact, there are a multitude of existing commercial zone parcels in the general vicinity that have not been built, revealing that there is absolutely no shortage of available commercial land. There is also an impressive list of available commercial warehouse space available in our locale, again, providing that there is no current, proving that there's no current shortage or imperative to create more. Fact, the unemployment figures for the area are in the three to three point five percent range, which is basically full employment. There's absolutely no pressure or need for additional jobs provided with this development. Fact, the negative impacts associated with excess light pollution from the built environment, noise pollution from facilities as well as vehicular traffic, particulate emissions from diesel trucks, excessive runoff flow into the creeks that could potentially compromise Fleming Road yet again, and all the new impervious surfaces that will reduce groundwater recharge, which is critical for all of the existing residential wells, are all significant. These impacts are not compatible with existing residential residents. Fact, this parcel is more than likely the most, is the most likely, most breathtaking habitat left undeveloped in the region. It would be an effrontery to the census destroyed for four hundred thousand square feet of commercial building. Parcels with the greatest level of biodiversity should be the ones that get the highest level of protection. A nature reserve is the best use for this parcel. Of course, the biological assessment report was not provided to us, making it all very suspicious. Lead commercial facilities to the business areas. Fact, the county and land conservancy groups have access to sufficient funds to make this the only regional park in this part of the county. It's going to be a park because the cost of building residential may prove to be unprofitable. This is why increasing the value of the parcel with the rezoning makes it very expensive for the community to acquire. Your own recent conducted surveys show overwhelming support for the protection of open space. The purpose of this zoning is to promote the health, safety, and general well for the community. Balance land value with land beauty. The purpose is not to enrich out of area developers so that they can flip properties. And I just save the rest for the notes.
All right, we'll move along. Ms. Barbara Robinson?
Barbara Robinson, five eighty-eight Fleming Road. I'm speaking on the rezoning application as well. I'm not gonna repeat what I said last month, except to say that I have provided the town attorney with correspondence from our attorney to stakes and restrictive covenants already in the chains of five all-possess property and are valid. There are other facts which you should consider in regard to this rezoning application. The applicants have stated that they're perfectly agreeable to create jobs for Youngsville. The fact is, as Carl said, the latest unemployment rate in Franklin County was three point one percent, which is down from the long-term average of five point five six percent. As of March eighth, indy.com lists twenty-nine thousand three hundred and forty full-time jobs available in Youngsville and the surrounding twenty-five mile area. Ziprecruiter.com lists forty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety full and part-time jobs. Obviously, there are plenty of jobs already available in this area. Another fact to consider is that there are currently nine commercial buildings for lease in zip code two seven five nine six, for a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and one square feet of already available space. There are also three sites under construction. On four hundred K Flex Way, four hundred thousand square feet of space will be available in two thousand and twenty-four. On Tarboro Road across from Hillridge Farm, ground's been broken for twenty-four thousand square feet of Flex commercial space. And on Mosswood Boulevard, there's a large site that has been staked off for a new building as well. And on Mosswood Boulevard, there's a large site that has been staked off for a new building as well. In addition, there are six commercial real estate properties for sale for a total of two hundred and thirty-nine acres available. On the other hand, there are only two residential properties with two plus acres for sale in two seven five nine six. If you're basing this rezoning approval on job creation and need for commercial space, the facts just don't support those statements. If you decide to grant the applicant's request for rezoning this property, it would be a flagrant disregard of the legal and factual circumstances of which you have undeniable knowledge. By not considering these facts, a judge could find you in violation of due process, and your decision could be considered arbitrary and capricious. In my opinion, this rezoning request isn't about providing jobs for Youngsville. It's about immediately increasing the value of this property for the owner. There would be no benefit to the hundreds of people who live in Fleming Farms, Fleming Forests, and Arrowhead Farms. In fact, it would have detrimental effects as it would increase traffic, including trucks. It could cause safety issues. On several occasion, I have personally been met oncoming trucks on Fleming Road that are over the center line. I would also definitely, it would also definitely impact the environment and can potentially cause flooding. And we put a commercial entity in the middle of a residential agriculture area. The facts are that the negatives greatly outweigh the positives for this rezoning, and that's really the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I think Mindy Jarrett was with the Girl Scout troop. I'm assuming she left. Okay. All right, and so Janie Raper, six seventeen Fleming Road.
Janie Raper, six seventeen Fleming Road. I bought, I purchased the property I live on that has a little over three acres of land back in nineteen ninety-eight. And just driving down Fleming Road, it just was one of the prettiest sights that Youngsville had to offer, really. So that kind of sold me that. Now, you know, my background is in real estate management. And also, when I left, uh, real estate management, which I still have my license for, but I'm, I'm retired from that. I went into banking and my expertise was relationship manager for new construction. So I dealt with a lot of builders. I made a lot of decisions. I loaned millions of dollars to builders to do exactly what some of the builders are doing here today. But we had a lot of restrictions with that. And I have to just say, I support what Carl and Barbara Robinson are saying. I support it one hundred percent. And I can't help but think, when I purchased my property, I had deed restrictions. It's gonna be kind of nice to know when I get rid of this seller that I won't have a problem. I can just go out and I, I can ignore those deed restrictions and just go ahead and sell it, maybe split it up or whatever, and get it approved. I don't understand that. My understanding was you, you couldn't ignore deed restrictions that, that has been placed on a piece of property. You cannot ignore that. That's the reason for it. And my understanding is that the only way that you can ignore that is for the original owner to remove it. That's not the case in this six to six eight. So I just beg you to give some consideration to this. There's a lot of elderly people, including myself, that live on Fleming Road. And putting commercial on Fleming Road will be a hassle. It's gonna make it a lot tougher for young families to move out there with children because of the traffic and the conditions. So I just beg you to reconsider and, and think about. Suppose you lived there, how would you? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Raper. I think Kelly was with you, Rod. Does she wanna? You good? Okay, all right. Mr. Tom Parrish. I didn't get an address. I just got Yville.
I have a mailing address. It's not my physical address because.
You're fine. I was, I was just teasing a little bit.
Traffic on Fleming, just tearing my mailbox up. I couldn't. That's what I'm always, my mailing address is nearby. I had to come in across town, get my mail, or I shouldn't be able to get it on Fleming Road back yet. Now, I'm seventy-two. Fleming Road is not physically address. Okay, you're looking for something. Because if you look on the map of this particular, first of all, we say, I want to thank each of you for the service you do. This is not an easy job, I realize. So thank you for your time, your effort, and consideration for everything, for both the person who's trying to develop and for the people that are already here that don't want to make sense of what's going on.
Sure.
And that's not an easy thing, I understand. So that's the first thing I wanted to do, is thank you for your time and service. If you look at the map of this particular parcel, the south part of the parcel is where I live. So you've got the phone line from the south side, and it's already been mentioned by Carl, which I thought presented very well. This doesn't tie in with anything that is a mixed use. On the north, you've got an environmental barrier. You can't build a road from Northbrook there to go across the environmental barrier, which is Brandy Creek. If you've ever been all the way to where the Brandy Creek is on the corner of that property, there's a railroad trestle, and you have to look up, see the railroad trestle. So it's, it's literally a barrier on that north side. The west side has a barrier of a natural gas pipeline. And then right behind that is the railroad. So there's no way you can tie that into anything else on the west side of the railroad. To the east is the residential area that has the restricted covenants that's been talked about. Then I'm on the south. So to say that it fits in with anything other than residential, I don't understand the thinking behind that. I'm just at a loss for that. It's already been mentioned about the restrictive covenant. I know that goes with the land. It definitely runs with the land. You've seen the settlement that was made twenty-five years ago. So there's definitely that restriction. So it kind of confuses me a little bit again how the town can then override private contract with two parties. Like the town said, oh, we can just do away with that restrictive covenant. That, I'm a little confused by that. So I would like for you to consider, have consideration for all these points when you make your deliberation. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Appreciate you. All right, and Madam Clerk, I know we had a handout from Mr. Ellington. Is he in attendance and wanting to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Ellington?
The handouts are to help me with my minutes.
Fair enough.
I'm Glenn Ellington, six oh four Fleming Road. I would like to recap the facts of the sixty-six acre Fleming Road. Your position on the board is to make a decision based on the facts and follow them where it best for the town of Youngsville. We have provided the town a lawsuit, which these sixty-six acres are of land, is included, and is properly filed with the registered deeds in Franklin County. In addition, Attorney Tendras has provided a signed document stating that the private restricted covenants are in the chain of title. And YDO and the state statute clearly say the higher restricted covenant shall govern. As a legislative decision, we have the right to appeal to a superior court where only the facts are considered. If a decision, if a decision is made without recent grounds or adequate consideration of all the facts, it is said to be arbitrary and capricious. The decision can be invalidated by an appellate case on that ground. And monetary damages could be requested. At that, at the present time, the new owner has not seduced any facts to support how this land can legally be rezoned. A signed title search to verify that the deed of covenants are not in the chain of title has not been provided. In the, in the packet, page eighty-three, is a land title survey that was produced by the landowner, which in my opinion is fraudulent. A recorded land title survey could have shown that this land in fact did have deed of covenants. Not providing a such, such a document could be suspicious of having evidence. Possible, possible legal actions may be taken if this rezoning is approved, such as an appeal from the members of the Fleming Farm with the town of Youngsville, whom the decision was made arbitrarily. A potential act of the town by aiding and abetting and a criminal act of the landowner. A lawsuit against the landowner for not following the restricted covenants that are on file with the registered deeds. To state this as a private matter of all the facts that are against the zoning change, my suggestion would be at a minimum, have the landlord provide a recorded land title survey with Franklin County Registered Deeds. This can potentially clear up a few questions and avoid any legal actions. No matter how this plays out, the deed of covenants will remain in effect as documented in the title search and put in place by the previous owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellington. I'm gonna butcher the name, Amanda. Yeah, it's, it's not the cleanest, so yeah. Did you still wanna speak? Okay.
This is here. We have the owner relatives out of the country that he's available online on the, the, I guess, Zoom or whatever you're thinking. We've got, we're here for questions. We respect your time and will reserve time for those questions.
Thank you. And Craig Durr, did you have anything that you wanted to add really quickly?
It was, um, here on behalf of the team to answer questions. I appreciate our staff and the commissioners from over the last thirty days giving our team an opportunity to talk for project, talk about the project, hear what some of your concerns are, and make some of the changes that we've made. Thank you very much. And like I said, the prop owner is listening and is available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that, sir. And then we, next we have Patricia Brown, one forty-one East Fleming Farm.
Everyone, I'm speaking in opposition to the rezoning of the sixty-six acres on Fleming Road. There have been several meetings where the subject of discussion was as to whether or not the restrictive covenants are applicable to the Ichabon property. Subsequently, I searched the Franklin County Registered Deeds, clicked on the index search, I clicked on the disclaimer. I entered problem associates in the box. My results gave me a total of sixteen pages. In about five minutes, I found a recorded deed on page sixteen of my results. I also found the corresponding consent judgment with Public Service Company of North Carolina, which includes documentation for the utility agreement on the property. And two pages before that, on page fourteen, I found the Declaration of Restricted Covenants and Settlement and Release Agreement indexed and referenced as RC for Restrictive Covenants, Book one one oh four, page three oh four. There's a wealth of information available to the public by researching registered deeds, especially when making the decision to purchase attractive land. When contemplating a purchase, there is a due diligence period where the buyer may receive constructive notice of certain information obtained by his or her attorney while doing a title search. And it is his or her decision to go through with the purchase or to look elsewhere for another property. In this case, the buyer took title to the property, whether the buyer of the property knew or did not know about the covenants attached to this parcel and in the chain of title. He is still legally bound by that. There are no title defects here. The corresponding restrictive covenants and settlement and release agreement are properly filed and indexed in the Franklin County Registered Deeds. This property is very marketable. In two thousand and eighteen, it sold for twelve thousand an acre. Seventeen years prior, properties were selling for ten thousand an acre. So they got a good deal. So in February of this year, a three acre lot sold for forty-one thousand an acre. This property can easily be conveyed, transferred, or sold at a reasonable price with the corresponding residential restrictions on it. And it may, and by no means does this prevent usage of the property. It just places restrictions on the property, making it more valuable as a residential real estate. By changing the zoning from AR to CP one, you would be essentially with constructive knowledge hating furtherance of a violation of the residential restrictions governed by law. In the Restrictive Covenants, Book one one oh four, page oh three oh seven, oh eight, you will find item fourteen, restrictions on Lot twenty-eight. The undeveloped land opposite Peace Fleming Farm Drive and along State Route eleven thirty-two, otherwise known as Lot twenty-eight, and then he passed partial reference, which I have right here, shall be developed, if at all, according to the recorded restrictions for all the other lots in Phase One of Fleming Farm. If and when the property contained in Lot twenty-eight is developed, it will consist of residential housing on lots no less than two acres inside. Then it goes on, decorums intend that these restrictive covenants, as described above, will touch and concern the land, shall run with the land, and shall be binding on, on the heirs, successors, and assigns of the decorums invading the portion of the property, the buffer area, the Fleming Portis Trapp, and Lot twenty-eight respectively, and then it's signed and dated by the decorums. There's also a reference to the lawsuit, ninety-six CBS, B two two. And then there's another reference in the, in the agreement that also refers to Lot twenty-eight, and then.
Ms. Brandle, we're wrapping up because we're, we're past time.
Okay, that's fine. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it and happy spring.
Thank you. All right, next up, I believe this says Jim Sampson. Yeah, Jim Sampson.
My name's Sampson. I do not live on. I can hear about traffic on Main Street. I panning to is that one page, it works beautifully to reduce it to the basics about better utilization of the existing infrastructure on Main Street. If you go out of town to the east, if you pay attention when you pass Baptist Church, you will realize that the road is already divided into three lanes. It could easily be accomplished from one A mile or so out of town until you get to the next traffic lane. Anyway, if you were to instill three lanes with a reversible center lane, this would allow you to have two lanes of travel during rush hours in the favored direction. So in this example, westbound through town in the morning at a reasonable time, say six to nine AM, and westbound the other direction, three to seven PM. It was doubled the capacity of the roadway in the favored direction. And I think the most, the important thing about this is the bottom of the first paragraph. This is something that could be done at a very modest cost in a very short time frame. No bypass, no roots. I don't know if anybody in this room has any idea of anything in play or about to happen that's going to improve the situation, because this would is sure not gonna happen in my lifetime. I can answer questions, some, anyway.
No, we, we appreciate the, the input, Mr. Sampson. I, I think with, you know, a lot of the, the things that are related to traffic, we're pretty much beholden to DOT, unfortunately, when, when it comes to these major roads. Gotcha. I, I didn't know if you was, if you had reached out to DOT by any chance to, okay.
I used to work for the State Highway Department in the state, not even go near that.
Well, I can appreciate your, your candor on that, so.
Why they put those two pinch points on the street under whatever they're doing now is totally beyond me. But this is doable. Whether or not there's interest or the ability to take care of it, I don't know.
Fair parts, if you'd like, I could reach out to.
Yeah, I was going to say if we could run this up to Scott and see what his take on it is. I'd be okay with entertaining that. So.
I wouldn't be surprised if he doesn't like it.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. All right, that is the list that I had for those that had signed up in advance. Do we have any latecomers that came in that did not have a chance?
Texas King, Remington Court. Well, you know, my grandma used to drive us from Franklin to Youngsville to go down to Tom Toggs Farm Factory over by the CrossFit and Landscape Company today. They used to throw out fabric leftovers and she'd use them for stitching together, all sorts of things. I like to go for two reasons. One is used fabrics to make really cool toys. And two, Fleming Road was dirt and she drove that old Fleming slow. I remember the windows being down and the crackling of the dirt road. I'd hang my head out the window just like a dog and enjoy the sunshine and breeze. And now I reflect on just, you know, how much has changed in the 35 years since that time, since those memorable days for me. Also, Panera was right. Youngsville is changing fast, not slow like my nanny drove, but fast like a commercial semi barreling down Fleming Road and squeeze a few seconds off its time. I met this allegorical semi driver once when I used to jog down Fleming Road. Sometimes he slows down. I now have to worry because, or excuse me, your decision to rezone will amplify the likelihood that, you know, my family and myself will encounter that 18 wheeler rolling down Fleming Road. More likely than not. And I ask you as a resident, as a jogger, as a father, as a husband, to pump the brakes on this unnecessary initiative until we've developed a more robust infrastructure to accommodate the growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. All right. Do we have any additional speakers that came in late that did not get a chance to sign up?
Okay, has the Per Partners' support been shared with the commissioners?
I believe that there was an individual that emailed something directly to the board. There was a letter about a cat rescue.
Oh. Hang on, I got me pulled up over here.
I don't think.
I responded back to her. She was asking about a a space at the for the Spring Fling. I directed her towards Amy. Just requesting to have a tent at Spring Fling.
I don't know if this is the same thing.
Yeah, I think that might be a different thing. Yeah, because that's the only one I got.
Anyone is welcome to reach out to the board members at any point in time. Staff. And forward things on if requested to do so. But we won't add comments from somebody to a in a private communication through the packet. So if you have that individual or want to represent that individual, you're welcome to do so.
Sorry about that. I can read this most of the reasons. This is a letter of support from Per Partners. Mr. Page, I am in full support of the rezoning Ichiban Fleming Road project to Corporate Park as a residence of Youngsville and president of Per Partners, Philon Rescue, which has been an operation in Franklin County and centered in Youngsville since 2009. I believe we are in need of this type of commercial space in the community. Our goal has always been to remain in Youngsville. We have been actively searching for a place to construct a shelter and in the future, a low-cost spray, spade, neuter, flint. These are desperately needed. And as the county continues to grow, they will be needing even more. Every piece of land that we have booked at has been out of our price range and in all locations. I can do so to our future plans and that is anything that has been available. This type of commercial space is what we would have needed and what is sorely lacking in the area. We want to stay in the Youngsville area, but so far we have not been able to find a suitable location. We can form and consider looking at other counties. The zoning of this piece of property can go a long way towards helping us stay in our community, excuse me, stay in our area of incorporation. Ultimately, we'd like to create a destination area with a cat cafe, educational facility for school groups, and a setting that would draw people for a day's outing. We realize this is in the future, but we are ready to start property zoning to Corporate Park. Please consider the good that this can bring Youngsville. Thank you. Luana Johnson, president and founder of Per Partners for that rescue.
You said Luana Johnson.
Luana Johnson.
Okay.
Will you forward that email to Aaron Paul?
I can do that.
And just to be clear, the reason that Per Partners can afford to go to this if the rezoning happens is because the owner's charitable nonprofit organization is paying Per Partners. Is that correct? Is donating money?
Type of space that proposes in this tech flex space that would accommodate that scale versus a available two acre parcel. It's not.
Okay. Thank you for that. I didn't see or hear anyone else that had comments that had signed up. So we'll go ahead and move along into the consent agenda. And I'm assuming the action requested here is to approve the consent agenda. I don't see. Oh, yeah. Action request approved consent agenda as submitted. Second. First and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. So diving into old business. Can we mute that? Because is it Joe?
Hello?
Mr. Johnson, do you have something you wanted to add real quick?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you. Oh, he was probably saying hi for the. Okay.
Yeah, I was. Thank you.
My bad. Sorry about that. All right. So moving into old business, we got item A, request to rezone property on Fleming Road across from Fleming Farm Road from ag to Corporate Park 1. The action requested here is approve as presented. When this came to our attention initially, there was certainly some questions and comments and concerns, and that's why we continued this to the meeting tonight. And Commissioner Percy alluded to some concerns and a request to change it over to CP1. So we appreciate everyone who spoke last time. It was certainly, you know, informational. It was also informational hearing tonight. What I would say prior to like calling for a vote is the board is put in a difficult position to where we're trying to balance everything, right? It's a balance of residents. It's a balance of people that have land and they want to do what they want to do on their land. And we're a body that is legislative. As far as the civil stuff between two different parties, we can't get into that. And Ms. Barbara Jones, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
I think that that's something that I advised you all regarding last meeting. Certainly, Mr. Pendergrass's letter actually put it really well that regardless of what happens with the zoning, he believes that the restrictive covenants apply. The zoning is not related to an action to enforce the restrictive covenants regarding the people who have mentioned challenging the decision. Like certainly anyone can challenge a rezoning decision and there's a procedure through Superior Court for that. And as you were charged with by the speakers as a body making a legislative decision, you have to take the facts and circumstances that you know and you're allowed to consider and do what you believe is best regarding the vote.
All right. Thank you for that. Were there any questions, comments, concerns from any of the commissioners?
It was my understanding that when the owner purchased the property, that they did a title search. And through that process, none of this was ever found. Maybe somebody can speak to that again, but you know, I don't think.
I mean, it's we got it in record.
Sounds like they feel like they have a strong case based off of the title searches that they have done in the past. And you know, I said this at the last meeting that I do like the idea of having more commercial space available. I want our town to be somewhere that people can come, live, work, and play. And we know we've got more people coming to live here every day. There's going to be a lot of people coming to live really close to this area across the street. And I think this would be better served as a commercial space than additional residential space. And I like the change from mixed use to CP1 because if we're, if we change it to mixed use and this changes hands and then 20 years later down the road, we're stuck with mixed use when really we wanted something that looked like this park and then it could be open to anything. And we don't want a bunch of apartments going in there.
I agree that we don't need more residential. I also agree that along the railroad tracks, it makes sense for commercial. I don't love everything dumping out on Fleming because it does present itself as a residential area. So even though I do think that the commercial is in line with the railroad tracks and what's there now, when you can't use North Brooks to go up and you just have to throw everybody out onto Fleming, that is a bit of an issue for me.
Fair enough. Um, any additional questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we're hearing none, as has been stated in the previous meeting. Approved by the planning board, we took kind of like an extended recess to gather more facts. And now the action requested here is to approve as presented. I move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Item 10, new business, resolution adopting proposed charter. The action requested here is to approve resolution as presented. We had a meeting this past Friday to go through a lot of the information that we've been working on for a few years. And I think Mr. Johnson with Franklin Times did a good job of summarizing a lot of that stuff for us. So Gary, if you wanted to give us a rundown of what we talked about? No? Okay. Did the commissioners have any questions, comments, or concerns prior to approving the resolution?
No, thank you for putting that together. That was a really great meeting, very informative. And I think it's a great idea to move forward with some of these.
Bullet points were spectacular, yes. And knowing the concerns and all that stuff going into it was certainly cleaner and more identifiable and helpful. So. Action requested here is to approve resolution as presented.
Any promotion?
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Item B is the resolution approving the public sponsorship of the Burn Barrel and Journey Food Pantry Special Event. The action. The next time we do this, can we not get hot dog water in this thing? Because I mean.
It's the fire. It's the fire truck water.
If you, if you, if you were to fill it with beer, I think I'd be okay. But that just.
Because I was there when they, I was there before they filled it and they had it like, I mean, it was spotless and they filled it up with just hose water.
That's um, maybe there's more chemical in there to help reduce the fires. Yeah, anyway. I was not paying attention. So I appreciate you guys bringing that to my attention there. So item B is the resolution approving public sponsorship of the Burn Barrel and Journey Food Pantry Special Event. And again, the action request is to approve resolution as presented. I'd actually ask the commissioners to maybe continue this to the next meeting because I feel like there's some items that were submitted that are unclear, right? It looked like there was some additional requests for road closures that apparently is not the case. So I'd really like if we could get Amy in here and maybe help us understand a little bit more about what exactly it is she's doing because to Mr. Bowen's point, one, if we're blocking that road, we're blocking multiple access to businesses, whether it's the Realt, say Victorian Yacht Club, that whole area. So I definitely have some concern over that. But then the amount of traffic that could, that may or may not be going there, depending on how less, I just. I've got, I've got some questions that I feel like we need answers to prior to approving, if that makes sense. Maybe that doesn't.
I.
Sorry.
Motion to move it till next meeting. Is that what I said?
Motion to continue?
Continue. Thank you. There's that word I was looking for.
All right, got a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion before we move to vote?
Yes, the date of the event is May, I saw. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that if we had enough time to do this before the actual event.
Our April meeting is the 13th.
Are they going to have enough time to plan ahead and do all that stuff, though? I mean.
Yeah, and get trucks and. I think with the amount of time that she, I mean.
I think if the intention is that the town support whatever she's trying to do, we can find a place where it'll work regardless. So the food trucks, I think everybody's in favor of having another event much like this where you volunteered to fall into hot dog water over and over. I think the question that was brought up to us tonight was what's the right place for it and how does that look? And so I think Amy would be the best person to answer that. So it's not that whether there's not an event, it is going to be an event. The town will staff up for it. The town will provide services. We just are wondering where.
We just need a clarification, basically. And what's presented is not as clear as what I would like to see. So. And I think she's got plenty of time. I mean, she's already promoting it. She's probably already got a list of food trucks that would potentially be there. So we just, we need that level of clarification. And I certainly don't have a problem with it either because I love bringing people to downtown and seeing what we have to offer. So. Any additional discussion before we vote on the continuation?
Could we approve and you guys negotiate it? Like approve that we'll have the event and you guys, you know, that doesn't work, be like, hey, look, we should do it here or there.
Well, I think there's ways of showing it approved is like with conditions to it. I don't think anyone is opposed.
Yeah, we can wait.
I want, I want the very definitive clarification on what it is they're trying to, what roads they're trying to close because I can tell you if it's Southwest Railroad, it's going to be a lot of upset folks, lots. If there's a concern about closing that road down because she needs additional parking, I think that's something that we can we can manage internally. So.
I think that the commission has the authority to delegate to anyone the ability to say you can have a couple of extra traskans out there or have a few more police officers be provided for that even. But for road closures, I don't think you can delegate the authorities to be able to close a road.
Sure. Okay, so let's, you know, again, we've got a first and a second. We're in discussion period. I say we go ahead and continue to the next meeting, get those clarifications answered, and then maybe have her come in and speak to us and just kind of level set before everything's approved. The process for potentially changing the application shouldn't be difficult at all, should it? Just a couple of changes here and there and done.
Whatever she presents will be able to be incorporated immediately.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, so we got a first, second. We've had discussion. Is there any addition? Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, so we got a first, second, uh, we've had discussion. Is there any additional discussion before I call for a vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any others? All right, that is unanimous. Item C, downtown shared use parking agreement. Uh, the action requested here is to authorize the town administrator, soon to be manager, to enter an agreement on behalf of the town with Rocky Top Youngsville LLC. Wiggins Build LLC, W and W Properties and Investments LLC. Or any combination of them to build a public parking lot on the businesses at Cross and Main and to enter into contracts for that purpose for a total cost. Not to exceed hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the.
You absolutely can.
Staff worked with the um, developers in the vicinity. And we uncovered that there are additional rights that were transferred to the um, parcel that was the Old Town Hall. And so if a restaurant goes there, it may also use the parcel behind it. Because of that, the need for the town to. Act as a steward for the public good here is somewhat mitigated. We still have every bit of responsibility to provide additional downtown parking spaces. And so what staff is recommending is rather than us entering into an agreement for this, that the town. Go ahead and um, begin the process of improving the lot in the back, pick up those twenty-five spaces. But that we would not redevelop the Cross and Main Lot and not develop the lot behind uh, the Old Town Hall. Which would be, as y'all are aware, the deployment of public dollars on private land. This would be just me spending money on our lot because the the new um. Developer of the Old Town Hall also has rights to develop for the purposes of a restaurant, the parcel behind them.
Okay. Think of that clarification. Ms. Barbara Jones, do you have anything?
Right, so just to add, um, they have an easement to use the the restaurant, which is um, sort of the the top building in that sketch. Uh, acquired an easement from the owner of the parcel to use that space with twenty spaces. For parking or any other purpose in operating a restaurant. Um, and so I believe staff, uh, we met with um, the owner of the property, the restaurant. They're hoping to hand over the keys May first. And so the proposal from them was that we gravel the lot. Uh, that doesn't mean we stop working toward perhaps uh, a shared use agreement under the terms that that we've discussed previously, but. We'd like to give uh, the town administrator some flexibility to like gravel the lot if that's the best decision for right now.
And and that makes a ton of sense, too, because they're they're ready to get things running, right? So we can always monitor this scenario, monitor the situation and come back at a later date and still have that going on, so. Um, I'm in total agreement with it and I think um, having additional parking downtown. Is a big deal and hopefully a lot of people would love it and use it, so. Did y'all have anything else y'all wanted to add to that?
Still, no action needs to be taken on this item unless. Y'all further desire this to happen sooner rather than later.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners?
What would be the timeframe then?
Does the gravel lot would happen before Heliad opens?
Gotcha.
And they would of course be entitled to do whatever they wanted on the lot that they have rights to. And then ours would be likely overflow parking for that and public parking for the for the.
Would we still be um, putting up signage for the public parking?
I think we should.
I would appreciate that. Okay.
Cause then what we could do at a later date, so what he's saying is go ahead and take some steps now and then once we get to a point where we do decide. That needs to be paved, then we can have you enter into that.
So their plan is gravel that lot as well now?
It's it's.
For the interim.
Yeah, well, no, I'm saying what if we knew what their plan was for the twenty spaces.
We just discovered that.
Right.
The easement existed about seven days ago, ten days ago, excuse me.
Right, um, they also were not aware that the exit existed, so when I found it, they were very happy. We don't need an agreement with anyone to put gravel on our own lots, say.
Sure.
Right.
That's why we're sort of deferring. Our understanding is they'll be using it for parking.
Right.
I I'm not sure to what extent they'll improve it or not.
Well, that was my question. If they're, I would say if they're gonna pay that, we would. I I mean, then it looks junky if they have a nice paved lot and we have a gravel lot behind it.
They may be doing something similar to what we've seen in a few other places where the lot initially is gravel. They they're they're likely to put in at least one concrete space.
For ADA.
Yeah. Um, and and the balance may be gravel for.
Okay.
Some time.
Okay, I mean, that's, I'm fine with gravel. It's cohesive with all the other stuff.
All right, sounds good. So we don't need to take any action on this as of right now? That's what I'm hearing? All right, um. So we'll move along into item D, which is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, new section sixteen dot three. Conservation subdivision developments. Uh, again, the action requested here is to approve text amendment as proposed.
I've got one for that uh, sixteen three dash three B. Where it talks about a paved greenway, minimum ten feet.
Okay.
I feel like that should be a paved shared use path, minimum ten feet. And an unpaved greenway pass with a maximum of five feet. So if they wanna have like a little creek pass. Walking down to a creek or something, but we're not like not to pave that, but have like a little walking path, maybe it's like some gravel spread out, mulch spread out or something.
Cause I know we've done that in some of the newer um. Subdivisions, that's been a requirement. Um, what does it currently state now, though?
Right now, it says uh, paved green light rail at a minimum of ten feet wide.
Yeah, that's, and that was you just said?
Yeah, but then adding the option of unpaved, like going down, like maybe like a creek grill.
Okay.
But that'd be a maximum of five feet, so like it'd be little bitty, just walking paths, kids get down to the creek and play.
How difficult would that be to add that to just?
Difficult, yeah.
This is what um. Why is his name not coming?
Carl.
Thank you. I was thinking Kurt. I'm like, that's not right. This is what Carl was speaking to, correct? Um. Is it worthwhile to review what he was saying and add or remove or?
It absolutely would be.
I mean, this stormwater drain thing is probably a a good point, I would think, and.
Recommendation may be. He gave a lot of of great advice and fortunately he wrote it all down, so we can go back and and take our time with it. Um, if we don't have a regulation in place. Developers can do what they want. If we have a regulation in place and then we fine tune it a little bit at the end.
Got you.
So I would recommend we adopt it and then we'll start another one um, such that.
We amend it?
Yes, perfect.
Okay.
That makes total sense. Um, any additional questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners?
Do we need to make that as part of our motion to approve?
I think I think uh, i- if you wanted to approve the text amendment as amended by Commissioner Percy. That would work and then we just will start another one next month with the planning board that'll.
Yeah, so I didn't know if we needed to do anything to make sure that happens.
Good. All right, did you catch everything he just said?
Yep, I move to approve as amended by Commissioner Percy.
All right, we got a first, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, first and the second, any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item E, presentation of annexation petition twenty twenty-three dash one, Welch Ichiban Fleming Road. Madam Clerk?
This is the property that we were discussing earlier about the resolve.
All right, and item F is resolution directing clerk to investigate a petition received under North Carolina general statutes. One sixty A dash thirty-one, twenty twenty-three dash one, Welch Ichiban Fleming Road. The action requested here is to approve resolution as presented.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. I'm trying to lose my voice. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item G, presentation of certificate of sufficiency for annexation twenty twenty-three dash one, Welch Ichiban Fleming Road.
The map and the meets and bound description has been investigated and it is sufficient, as are all the signatures on the application. Very good to move forward.
All right. And item H is uh, resolution fixing date of public hearing on question of annexation pursuant to North Carolina general statutes one sixty A dash thirty-one. Twenty twenty-three dash one, Welch Ichiban Fleming Road. Action requested here is to approve resolution fixing date of public hearing for April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for that. Uh, reports and other business, um. It's been a day. I don't really have anything. I know there's some updates from the commissioners as far as trash collection and other things like that, so um. I'll go ahead and turn things over to Commissioner Redd.
I have nothing today.
All right, Commissioner Percy?
Everybody come out to the spring fling, March twenty-fifth. Or the weekend before, I think most a bunch of businesses are having St. Patrick's Day events on that the eighteenth as well.
All right. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brain?
Uh, we had the uh, economic development, the commission meeting this morning and. Biggest takeaway from that is to go out to uh, nc cash dot com and see if you have any money. Uh, he was, he pushed that really hard, um, the uh, the state treasurer. Said lots of uh, money out there that is unclaimed, uh, so. Um, I haven't gone out there to check yet, but he said there's towns, there's counties. Uh, what'd he say, fifty-something counties that have money out there that's sitting. Uh, and if you, uh, Ms. Page, you wanna add to the?
The town of Youngsville does not have money outstanding. The town of Youngsville ABC store has less than a hundred dollars, it's outstanding.
Okay, so. All right, um. Uh, one other thing, um. Uh, forget his last name, uh, Rod.
Mr. Owen?
There you go, thank you. Um, he he mentioned um. Having people using the bathroom out by their cars. I I don't know if that's something that we need to make sure that we have enough porta-johns at those events or something like that. I don't know if. That was the reasoning sometimes is, you know, people are gonna. Just do what they do, but I don't know if that if we need to re uh, highway that and see if that's something where. Maybe if we had more of those, we wouldn't have that type of issue.
I I feel like he was talking about drinking at weddings.
Uh, I thought he.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, that was what I gathered was that he wasn't talking about a town event when that took place.
I thought he was directly referencing the food truck rodeo that we were.
Oh, it's possible.
I can email him and find out.
Okay, all right. Well, anything we can do to help prevent that, and that's all I have.
All right.
I got one more thing. This is a not so humble brag. For the uh, Chamber, I'm the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. In our meeting this month, they talked about normally for their monthly mingles, they have about ten or fifteen people show up to them. Um, they had one here in Youngsville this month and they had ninety-four people RSVP to come to it and. Um, I actually seen people, it was over here at the burnt barrel and I actually seen some people walking, I'm like, this is really busy for a Wednesday, like. I mean, it was, it was packed. I mean, it was people outside, people inside. Um, and they were bragging about how great a showing Youngsville had for that, so.
Thank you for that not so humble brag.
People wanna be here.
The intersection of awesomeness, um. Mr. Wiggins?
Uh, can we get a report on Main Street?
Do you want me to do that with staff or do you want me to do it right now?
Well, I know you and I have talked about it a little bit, but could we just get a general?
Can I turn, can can we put a pin in that for right now and let me let him give a staff update on that so I can get to Commissioner Johnson and and we'll go through? And I'll definitely yield the floor to him. Um, Commissioner Wiggins, do you have anything else? No, okay. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
I got nothing, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um, Ms. Katie Barber Jones?
Thank you.
All right.
Enthusiasm for the charter.
Perfect, perfect. Um, and I'll turn things over to staff for a update on Main Street.
Railroad is open again. As y'all are aware, uh, the town was misinformed about when it was going to close. Then we were also misinformed again about when it was gonna close and then we're also misinformed about how long it was gonna be closed for. Um, I think everybody worked together as much as possible to to get that completed. Um, our contractors were actually the ones that were out there setting panels. Um, even though the railroad was supposed to have their crane come by and do that, it was our contractor that did that. Because they were sitting around and were um, trying to get the work done as fast as possible rather than just, you know, on the railroad's time. Um, the project is going along um, as close to schedule as can be expected. Um, the clause for if they take too long is still in in effect. Um, I I haven't seen what the new updated date was um, for the completion where where. Uh, fines begin being assessed. It was bumped down a little bit when the railroad told them that they weren't allowed to work until they got a flagger. But we're still uh, anticipating uh, completion by June first. The project is, if you guys have seen, they're working above the ground now, uh, so it's much more visible. They're not working at night anymore, um, although I say that next week they are going back on nights for the tie-ins for the water. Because the shops on Main where Tin Pig and Mary Coe are, um, that water line still needs to be tied in. And then there's another connection of a water line at uh, the intersection of Cross and Main. Most of the demolition is completed downtown. The only place that has left to be uh, demoed is the area in front of the church that was. Next to the community house and then right across the street from that, if you see the curb in that area, it looks like. It needs to be demolished. Well, it it's already started to be demolished, needs to be demolished the rest of the way. Uh, and that should be underway shortly. Um, they are aware of the date for the spring fling on on March twenty-fifth. And they should have everything polished up by then. We even expect that they're gonna have um, trees planted downtown. They're not gonna have a lot of the bushes in yet, but they'll have some of the trees in place for the spring fling. Um, the brickwork that you guys have seen, um, mo- most of that is in. It's it's not complete yet and they'll they'll have the brick guys out again. Um, but as far as I'm aware, all of the driveways with the exception of Rodney White's have been completed. Anywhere that there is sidewalk now on West Main Street, um, is the is the the finished project. Town staff will be following up when they're, when the contractors leave and will clean the sidewalk where there's brick that's been. Um, from the previous renovations, there's some brick that has stayed out there and we will also edge the sidewalk in front of um. The the lots there that stretch from Cowboy Flipper's Burnt Barrel, those those sidewalks are are very much in need of edging. And then. The the intersection of Crop and Main, that whole area will be disrupted for a while while they add the right turn lane on Northbound ninety-six. And and Rodney White is um, we've been in communication with the contractors. Lose his access to Main Street for a while while they rework that curb and gutter in there. Then they'll open that one back up again and they'll close his access on to Cross Street while they rework that area.
Okay.
Was there anything else, Commissioner Wiggins, that you asked for me to do that?
My only other question is, will they come back and do cleanup?
Absolutely. So there are, there are um. A number of small spots where they've stored items and material and and those sorts of things. Before their project is done, they will have all of those spots cleaned up.
What about the side railroad streets? Are they gonna be closed and redone?
There are crossings. Across the railroad that will will be installed. They, what what they're going to do is they're going to stamp the asphalt that's there and so um. It'll have a probably a wide white stripe and then red stamped um, asphalt there. So they won't widen this crossing from what it is now, but there's tons of room. I was out there today, standing uh, uh, adjacent to the railroad tracks. With heavy truck traffic going by, um, it it's it's deceiving how much room there is until you get lines painted on it. You can see. Where where uh, folks are as they go across there, so there is a. Pedestrian crossing on the south side and the north side of Main Street that will be um. Stamped and they'll have like a big fancy roller that comes in and heats up and rolls across it. that will be stamped, and they'll have like a big fancy roller that comes in and heats up and rolls across it, and then they'll put down probably thermoplastic, but maybe some fancy paint, both on the north end.
Lots of fancy paint. So what about the actual railroad crossings on like Winston? Like those, are they doing, are they redoing that?
So.
I feel like Pine is okay, like Winston's kind of jagged.
The pavement, like they were going to do something.
Oh, maybe I haven't been over lately, then, okay.
CSX has been inconsistent with their messaging. They've told us that they were going to close all three at the same time.
Right.
And we told them, you cannot do that for emergency response alone, that is not possible in this situation. And as you see, they didn't do all three at the same time. They then came back and said they would schedule Pine and Winston later. The latest that I've heard is that they're not going to make changes to Pine and Winston.
They definitely cut across the street in the pavement. Yeah, okay.
Expect the communication with the contractors.
Wait and see, let's wait and see. Just wake up and go running and be like, it'd be like Christmas morning.
Thanks. Oh, the pavement fairy came. Any additional updates from staff?
I just would request that the commission keep staff members in their thoughts and prayers over the next. We have a staff member whose sister is very sick and needs our support.
Absolutely. I think that goes without saying, so. Thank you for that, Mr. Page. Madam Clerk, do you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, no need for closed session, so it is time to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we've got a first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned as of 8:32.